Two, one.
So I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on October 8th, 2020. Once again, we're complying with Governor Inslee's proclamation, so most of this council is doing remote. I'm here at City Hall, but given that, we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. We have, yeah, another, another pledge of allegiance successful. We have an approved, or we have an agenda and consent agenda items. Is there any additions, or can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We have approved the agenda and consent agenda items. First up on our agenda is a public comment, and I am not on the agenda. And we do have one person signed up for public comment. And we'll wait, I think it's Wayne Olson, is Wayne available?
Yes.
Hello.
There you go, Wayne, can you state your name and keep your comments about three minutes?
Thank you. Mayor Ryder, Deputy Mayor Pratt, council members, my name is Wayne Olson, Lacey resident living at Panorama. I am a volunteer with several local climate advocacy organizations, but I'm here mostly to represent my grandchildren. I will summarize the case for including natural gas action items in the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. Further details are in the email that I sent to you Tuesday, including graphs and references. Number one, natural gas is mostly methane, about eighty-four times more potent as a greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide. Methane concentration in the atmosphere is increasing in part due to fossil fuel extraction, fracking, flaring, and leaks in the distribution system, in addition to thawing of Arctic permafrost. Three, carbon dioxide and methane are the two largest drivers of human caused global warming, and this warming influence increasing forty-five percent in the last thirty years. Four, the hundred ninety-four nations at the Paris Climate Accord agreed to the goal of keeping global temperatures from increasing no more than two degrees Celsius, or about four degrees Fahrenheit, and attempt to keep the increase well below that. To meet this goal, the scientific community had concluded that global greenhouse gas emissions must approach net zero carbon by the middle of the century. Five, we cannot realistically get to net zero carbon without shifting from fossil fuels to alternate energy sources such as wind and solar. Point six, prices for wind and solar energy at the utility scale are now twenty percent cheaper than natural gas, and prices are continuing to fall. Mass energy storage prices are also continuing to fall. Seven, most of the largest investor owned utility companies in the United States are switching from fossil fuels to become net zero carbon by 2050. By our own Clean Energy Transformation Act, or CETA, Washington State's electricity grid will become fossil free by 2045. So number eight, economists expect few, if any fossil fuel companies, will make a profit on natural gas sales as demand declines in the future. Thus, fewer retail outlets will support the smaller markets of grandfathered residential accounts, most likely at higher prices. So in conclusion, this is the classic example that the market will dictate energy sources being used, and it is rapidly moving toward renewable sources with mass energy storage as a solution. The coal-natural gas era will end as whale oil and the horse and buggy eras did. The natural gas related action items in the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan merely accelerate the process, saving residents money and avoiding significant carbon emissions. That's a win-win. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne, I appreciate it. And Wayne was the only person we have had signed up for public comment. So next item on our agenda is official proclamations. So as many as, as many of you know, the city of Lacey was one of the first communities in Washington to be designated a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation. And this evening, we're marking our twenty-ninth consecutive year to qualify for the award. Since first earning the award in the early nineteen nineties, Lacey has invested more than eight million dollars on tree planting and care, and we've distributed nearly thirty-four thousand free tree seedlings to residents. We're extremely proud that our community features more than six thousand formal street trees along our roadways and boulevards. And we're equally proud that Lacey maintains more than twelve hundred acres of parkland and open space, creating one of the largest municipal park systems in the South Puget Sound. In recognition of these urban forestry accomplishments and the importance of trees in our community, I'd like to invite the council to join me in reading a special proclamation. And we will start as normal with Councilmember Miller.
Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and?
Whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska, and?
Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and?
Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoils by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and?
I think that.
Sorry about that, I was muted. Whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and?
Deputy Mayor?
Oh, whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of October twenty twenty as Arbor Month in the City of Lacey. And I encourage all citizens to support efforts to care for trees and woodlands, and to plant trees to provide beautification for future generations to enjoy. Signed myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, October eighth, twenty twenty. And, you know, this is always kind of a special time over the year for me. I remember the very first Arbor Day in the City of Lacey. My, my grandmother Ryder took me there, and we, we got two seedlings that we had planted after we had a pretty big windstorm that took down a tree in my, at my house. And so we planned those two seedlings that, that year. And now, when you look at my house, those seedlings are like forty feet tall. And so they're two huge seeds. Now, now they're, now they're, I put pine cones all over my yard, and it drives me crazy. But it still always reminds me of my grandmother and the very first Arbor Day where they, we gave away trees, trees that time. So it's a, it's a pretty special time. We, we usually have a big celebration, and I, and we give a tree to Yelm, and who's our sister city, and Yelm gives a tree to us. I'm not quite sure what's going on this year. Steve, do you, do you know any of that? Are we still doing that?
Yeah, unfortunately, Mayor, due to COVID, those events won't be taking place. We hope to pick them back up again next year.
Okay. Do you have anything else you want to add, Steve?
I don't. Actually, I was probably the one that handed you those seedlings twenty-nine years ago.
You know?
That was, that was like my first year with.
Yeah, it really probably was, you know, and I've always, I always kind of have remembered that after all these years. I remember being a Lacey City employee, and how big of a deal, it's like, I can't, that, you know, it was such a big deal. They're giving away trees, and I was, I was so excited. I was obviously considerably younger than I am right now. Boy, you've been with the City of Lacey a long time, Steve.
I think that was my very first event with the city, actually.
Wow. That's great. So next up on our agenda is actually the mayor's report, and I, I have a couple things. Let's start with our official recommendation, which is Arum Wheeler has been on the Parks Board. He's up for his next term. He's done a really good job, so I am recommending that we reappoint Arum to another term for the Board of Park Commissioners. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and we have reappointed Arum Wheeler. On a couple other notes, it's been a pretty busy time in my life lately. And I've been really active in a couple different organizations. One is the, the National, or the Washington Retail Association. I'm on, I'm on their Board of Directors. And, and they actually had nominated me this year to be at, to the National Retail Association, to be a, a, for me to receive an award as a retail advocate on the, on the national level. There was only two people that, two businesses that were recognized in the state of Washington, and I was one of them. And so it's, it's been a really big honor for me to be able to accept this award that's gonna be coming up here on October twentieth. And so a lot of good things going on in the Washington Retail Association, and I, I appreciate them nominating me for this award and receiving this award. The other thing I've, of course.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you. There's, of course, you know, here, we, as, at the local level, we understand the importance of retail sales in particular, because our budget is so dependent upon retail sales. And, and so it's been a, it's been a really interesting process to sort of be involved with other retailers, and also be an elected official, talking to other elected officials about the importance of retail sales and, and the struggles that we have within the industry. And so I think it's, it's been a lot of work, but I think we're, we're making some progress, and so that's, that's really good. The other thing I've been involved in over this past year or so is I'm, I think most of you know, I'm the honorary commander of the four-four-sixth airlift wing at McCord. And they usually, you usually only serve one term, and that switches over. They actually have asked me if I would accept a second term as an hon, as their honorary commander, the four-four-sixth. And I've, of course, I agreed, I'd love to do that. This past year has obviously been a little difficult with COVID, and so we felt like we kind of lost part of this year. But one of the exciting things that has happened at the four-four-sixth, and I think I reported out this earlier, is they have like a, a shark tank type of a, a thing that happens within the Air Force, where different groups come together and try to submit an idea that could either innovate or save money, or do something special for the Air Force. And our four-four-sixth actually came up with a new battery puller. That was a way to help save the, these really expensive batteries that they end up pulling. The way they have been doing it in the past, they end up damaging cells quite often, and then ruins, it ruins the battery. And so they, the four-four-sixth that came up with this invention to be able to pull it, and they took this idea all the way, and they competed with, I think, twenty different teams, a bunch of different teams, and, and their product was selected. And so they will be receiving a grant, and, and what the grant will do is they'll get a 3D printer, and they'll be able to 3D print this new battery puller, and be able to distribute them to any, any of the mechanics that work on those, on those planes. And so it's, it was pretty exciting to hear, not only that we won, the four-four-sixth had won that award, but then they asked me if I would be an honorary, the honorary commander for another term. So that's a little bit of what's been going on in my life lately. And next on our agenda is the city manager's report.
I'm Mayor and City Council. We have one item before you, which is a contract award for the Lacey SPC SCC, SPSC building. A lot of consonants. Building in the lower level, which, as you know, houses a Lacey Veteran Services Center. And Steve Kirkman's gonna provide, actually Ashley Smith is gonna provide the background on that.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and council members. City staff awards recommends award of the SPSC building to tenant improvement project. That's PW twenty twenty dash nineteen to low bidder of J.A. Morris of Olympia. The bid amount is three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and zero cents. And the engineer's estimate was four hundred and two thousand dollars and twenty, excuse me, four hundred and two thousand, twenty-five dollars. There were five bidders, however, the apparent low bid was rejected due to an incomplete bid package. And there are sixty working days allotted in the contract, and we expect work to begin in late October. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
I would make, I'd make a motion to award a contract number PW two zero two zero dash one nine to low bidder J.A. Morris Construction from Olympia, Washington, in an amount of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and zero cents.
Second.
It's.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion.
I would just like to-
Go ahead, Councilmember.
I'd just like to say, the Lacey Veteran Service Hub has been a godsend to our veterans and our communities' quality of life. When our veterans are doing great and thriving, so does the community. So, but it takes a caring and thriving community to, you know, call to action and getting things done and making things like this happen. Anyway, it's great to have it.
Appreciate it. So, this $329,000, we have, I thought we had put in a budget of half a million, so this is quite a bit less than this. And is this being re, I'm trying to remember, is this the being reimbursed, or is this the interior? This is the interior part, the exterior part's being reimbursed, right?
This portion is the interior tenant improvements for the entire lower level, excluding the shared common spaces. And then, it also includes the multipurpose room on the second level.
And we, what, set aside half a million dollars for this project? I'm trying to remember what that number, that budget number we set aside was.
Off the top of my head, we had the engineer's estimate at about $400,000, so it still was.
Scott, do you remember what we set aside for?
I'll look at that number.
Okay. I know we've been planning for this, we know this has been coming for a long time. And so, I was just curious of what that number was we budgeted. And it seems that it's like, it seems lower than what we thought it was going to be, so I guess that's good to see. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to award this Lacey contract number PW 2020-19 to low bidder. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries, and we have, we will award that low bid. So, next up on our agenda is standing general committees. And Finance Committee is up first, which I was the chair. And we have several different items on our agenda. The first item was the revenues and expenditures estimate. And obviously, this has been really important this year, as we've been trying to figure out our budget for 2021. And all the unknowns that we had going into this with COVID, this council, at the very beginning, reacted swiftly and immediately put into several, you know, budget, you know, tightening things that we did to, you know, make sure we're going to get through this year, not knowing what the impact of COVID was going to be. So, but the 2020 sales tax, after all this, is still above the 2019 sales tax collection rate. But there has been a decrease of $786,000 compared to the adopted budget of 2020. So, there's a little bit difference there. We're still under what we thought we were going to be, but we're still ahead of last year. So, and the biggest thing that's really been carrying the City of Lacey through this time is our new construction. And likely, we are going to see strong new construction through 2021. It's estimated that the utility tax, though, will have a decrease of $409,000. So, it's, I think that's a lot to do with the weather patterns this year, for sure. So, the 2021 estimated expenditures will be, that will be impacted by increased labor costs, and then the reductions in 2020 budget due to COVID-19 will be unrestored in 2020. So, these include the neighborhood grant program, the City Manager Intern Program, replacement reserves for equipment and facilities, and certain line items reductions that will be brought to historic levels. And the City Council Budget Workshop is scheduled for October 1st. The work session, it's going to be a work session, then the City Manager will present the proposed 2021 budget on October 22nd, which is the council meeting, then followed by a public hearing on November 5th and November 19th. And then, the final 2021 budget is scheduled for adoption at the December 3rd 2020 council meeting. And then, the next, we discussed the utility rates, discussed utility rates. And I know since then, we've had some discussion as well. And just as a reminder, at the time of this meeting, we were looking at what if we had no rate increase for 2021? What if we just looked at 2021 as a normal year and moved forward, that's like COVID didn't happen, and went with a 3% water, 3% sewer, and a 4.5% stormwater increase? You know, and then the last item that we've discussed, and we discussed with this council since this meeting, it was what if we just hold off implementing the, any increase until July 1st? And that was actually what the staff was recommending at this meeting. And so, then the last thing we talked about was our animal services, the jurisdictional assessments. This is something that we actually asked staff to kind of bring back, and we want to talk some more about. The projected 2021 animal budget is $2.3 to $2.4 million. And a 1.6 to 1.7 million gap is currently needed to cover for expenses. So, what was, happened for many years, is that we haven't increased the assessments, and we've been taking reserves to balance that budget. And that is going to be very, you know, that is, we can't keep doing that. We have to make this account whole. And so, there's a suggested estimate that Thurston County would pay $800,000, this is based on population. The City of Olympia is $355,000, the City of Lacey is $353,000, and the City of Tamar is $167,000. Obviously, this is not something this council has talked a lot about in the past. And so, we're hoping to have a more of an in-depth conversation about this going forward. Scott, do you have anything you want to add to that? And I'm not sure where the, the other thing is, is I'm not sure where the other jurisdictions are at about that assessment, and what we can do about that.
He just had a meeting.
Yeah, I think the Deputy Mayor will probably provide you a briefing under her Commissions and Boards reports.
Well, there you go. Sounds good to me. So, given that, that's the end of my report. Next up is General Government.
So, this may have already been covered. We had one item, staff presented regional actions recently taken relating to tenant protections. The General Government Committee directed staff to gather more data to determine eviction issues within Lacey and surrounding areas to assist with discussions on how CARES Act funding could be applied for rental assistance. And that's my report.
And land use.
Righty, the Land Use Committee met on September 22nd. Deputy Mayor, Councilmember Greenstein, and I were present. We had several presentations. One, the first one was on the 2020 Light Industrial Commercial Zoning Tax Amendment. Staff has received a private application request in the Light Industrial Commercial Zoning Chapter, well, addressed in that chapter. This is in northeast Lacey. It's an applicant who wants to increase the maximum square footage from 200,000 square feet to 500,000 square feet. And this has been reviewed by our Community and Economic Development Department, as well as the Water Resources Division. During the review, staff noted a number of concerns that we feel needs to be addressed. One is the retention of existing small businesses that are currently on the site. The second is water quality related to existing onsite septic systems and stormwater, compatibility with surrounding land uses, and finally, transportation and circulation issues. The staff is going to continue to analyze the nuisance middles that they're receiving from the applicant, and the matter is going to go next to the Planning Commission, which will then make a recommendation to council. That's that one. We also got briefed on the Urban Forestry Management Plan. This plan was developed in 2006, updated in 2013, and because of community concerns and changing regulations, it was agreed that we should probably do updates every five years on this plan. And the review content, I'm sorry, process will examine challenges, issues, and experiences related to the implementation of the plan since it was last updated. This plan will go to the Planning Commission for review and recommended updates. A task force had been developed to assist the Planning Commission in developing recommendations for changes to the plan and tree regulations. These include enforcement of tree regulations, the street tree program, private property trees, and consistent application of regulations, retention of existing trees through development process, tree education and outreach, and potential establishment of a tree board. And then, we got an update on the Housing Action Plan from Wickwalk, our Director of Community and Economic Development. He told us that the jurisdictions that are party to the plan are beginning baseline demographic work on this, and the city will send a survey to landlords within the region to obtain current data on tenant landlord dynamics. So, more to come on that. That's my report.
Great, thank you. Next up is Boards, Commissions, and Committee Reports. I'm up first. The Mayor's Forum did meet last Friday, and it was one of those times where we actually, as the mayors of Thurston County, were tasked with something, and were asked if we could give our, answer a few questions and give some of our opinions when it comes to the Evergreen State Colleges and their search committee for the next president that is really going to be in charge for turning around Evergreen State College and their low enrollment. And this is actually getting, starting to get really serious. All the state colleges are funded by the state legislature, and if you look at the Evergreen State College, their enrollment has gone down precipitously over the past several years. And they're having a more difficult time justifying to the state legislature that they should be receiving funding and keeping their doors open. And so, this next president is going to be, you know, really important for them to, you know, take a look at where they've historically been at, and what they need to do different to bring their numbers back up so they can be a functional university. And so, the person who's in charge of gathering information for the search committee all asked the mayors quite a few questions. And so, we were pretty honest with our responses and what we believe needs to be different at the Evergreen State College. And so, it was a pretty candid time, and really, all the mayors were on the same page on this one. You know, in many, many places, there is always, there's a pretty tight-knit connection between the university and the city it's in, or the city it's next to. You know, we have a, obviously have a good longstanding relationship with St. Martin's University and the City of Lacey. And for whatever reason, we've, Evergreen State College and the City of Olympia and the surrounding communities, that has been a fractured relationship for quite a while. And so, but I do remember a time where we all used to go to Super Saturday. Does anyone remember Super Saturday? I mean, that was a great time, where you used to go to Evergreen State College, and it was open, and you got to go on campus and see what they were all about and learn about the Evergreen State College. And it was a great connection that it had with the community. I went, you know, every single year as a kid. And we haven't, they haven't had that for a long time. And that's, so that was one of my suggestions, is that they need to have some connections back with our community and bring something like a Super Saturday back, and talk about all the good things that do happen on college, instead of just highlighting all the negative things that we seem to hear about. So, that was, that was one of my suggestions that I gave, and that has actually been repeated by several other people. So, I feel like I'm in pretty good standing there. But it was, it was, it was good to hear from all the mayors on this one, where number one, we all agreed that the Evergreen State College is, should be a vital part of our community, and that we wish it was more. And so, we do, we wish whoever's going to be the next president, all the luck of turning things around and having a better connection between the university and the surrounding communities. So, that was what took up most of the Mayor's Forum. Of course, we always go around and talk about what's going on in each of our communities. The one of the things I did bring up, and I'm happy to bring it up again here, is that I talked about the fact that, you know, this is, last year was the last year we received the $200,000 from the county that helps us keep the RAC, the Regional Athletic Complex, operational. You know, we, as the City of Lacey, we have taken that over. We did have a contract that allowed us to take that over early, and the county paid us some extra dollars to do that. But those dollars are now gone, according to that contract. But, so, now it's left to the City of Lacey to have to figure this budget gap. And it's, the Regional Athletic Complex is one of those, one of those places that it doesn't make money itself, but it produces a lot of economic activity, not only in the City of Lacey, but all across our community. And I do feel like it would be important for the other communities to understand this and to help us with the Regional Athletic Complex. And so, I sort of made my case there at the Mayor's Forum. I'm not sure how far that's going to go, but I did have John Hutchinson afterwards want to hear a little bit more about it. He wasn't, he wasn't even really aware of the $200,000 that was being sent to the City of Lacey every year. So, I have, I'll have a phone call back in to him and talk about this. But I do think it's important for our other communities to support the RAC. And so, we'll see, see if we can get some progress when it comes to that. The other thing is under Transportation Policy Board, we didn't, our meeting's not till next Wednesday, but I am, I am on their, the next year's priorities. Their workshop that happened last Friday, there's a, the group of us got together to look at all the things that the Thurston Regional Planning Council is involved on, and tried to look at the list and report back to the full council the things that we should be focusing on next year. And so, I took part in that last Friday. And there's, there is a lot on the plate of the Thurston Regional Planning Council these days. And that's my report. Next up is the Deputy Mayor.
So, Orca and Lot don't meet until next week. Joint Animal Services met October 5th. The main item was the budget, of course, and we haven't decided on what the budget will be, but we kind of narrowed it down to two options, although we were presented with the full amount, as the mayor talked about. The cost of running animal services is pretty significant without using our reserves. And we've been using reserves for, I don't know how long, maybe always, I don't know. But, so, one is we talked about using the $210,000 of the reserves, and the fee to Lacey would be $312,964. This would leave Thurston County still not having full services. This non-full service is now actually the status quo. And I didn't capture what that would be to the county, but it's kind of a, around a 10% across the board for all the jurisdictions. Option two, Lacey would pay $326,496, and then JazzCon would still use the 210K in the reserves. Thurston County would receive full service, so their amount that they pay would be bumped up by quite a bit. We didn't make a decision because he's, Time Minister of the County Commissioner on JazzCon needs to take it back to the- needs to take it back to the Commissioners for discussion. We actually rejected at this time is the full cost, which is, which is really expensive to administer right now. And what we have decided to look at is how over four years Thurston County can get up to their full costs for the full service. Right now, which would bring it up to, I think, and correct me, Scott, a ride around $1 million, a little over $1 million. But doing it gradually, so using reserves, but walking it down. And do you have anything more to add on that? You know, there was two or three graphs, and we don't get a copy of the budget spreadsheet, so it's a little hard to remember.
Jazzcom's had a lot of discussion about how does Thurston County have full services like the cities? So for those that don't know, back in about 2003, the county was going through budget cuts, and so they actually had to eliminate field services specific to loose dogs, animal-to-animal aggression, as well as barking complaints. And actually, that's a fair amount of complaints that you'd think of when people complain about sort of dog-related issues. And so it's been a constant issue for the county and also really for city residents who border the unincorporated areas. So on one point, if their neighbor who's in the city, you know, they could respond to a loose dog or a barking complaint, but if they're behind the fence and have me in the county, they don't have that same service. So that's been a friction point with, between the cities and the county. And so there's been a lot of discussion with Jazzcom, is trying to figure out, can the county at some point add the additional field resources or field officers to provide a consistent level of service that the cities currently pay for? And to the Deputy Mayor's point, it would cost well over $1 million for the county to do that. So we're looking at, can we use reserves strategically, about $210,000, and actually have them, in a sense, ease into that? Now, everyone would take benefit of that $210,000, but that increase would lessen to the county if we utilize reserves. So that's the kind of discussion that's been going on with Jazzcom right now.
And we won't know until the Commissioners discuss it and come back and, and see where they are at with their budget and stuff. So there was one more item besides the budget. It was just, it was about a cat complaint or cats. There was 13 to 16 cats that were being either encouraged or fed right around this one gentleman's house on 14th Way, I think. And they were damaging other people's property, scratching cars, and were quite feral and stuff. And so the issue is about trapping and who's responsible for trapping. The gentleman only said he owns three cats and not the other X amounts. And so it's kind of a neighbor-to-neighbor issue, but it's also problematic because these cats are getting into people's yards.
Lenny, do you have a question?
I do, I'm just curious, are we, is there anything being done as far as working on the long-term financial strategy for Jazzcom? I mean, it sounds like you've got some ideas on what we're going to do for '21, but this doesn't sound like a sustainable model at all.
Well, that's what, what the issue is, is if we could work on it over the next four years to bring everybody up to full service and then come up with a plan to how to additionally raise revenue. And raising revenue is not only just grants writing, but also maybe increased licensing, whatever else. One of the things they do know is licensing is, it's fairly inexpensive, and a lot of the people forget to license their animals. So there is that. Is there anything, I don't think there's anything else.
I'm curious.
Sarah is definitely looking at it.
I'm curious, if you've been working off of reserves for the past 10 years, where did you get that big of a reserve budget, you know, that you've been able to take it for 10 years and it's not empty?
So part of it has to do the generosity of the community. A lot of people actually will will money to animal services when it comes to, because they believe in the cause and what they do. Also, good fiscal management and staying within the parameters of the budget. There's about 3.4 million in, I'll say, assets that, some are restricted, some are unrestricted. But there has been some level of subsidy, if you will, for the last 10 years. And primarily what has been the issue is that there's been economic issues, there's been reaction to the assessments going up. And so the solution has been in the past to utilize those reserves, which, which is part of the Fund for Animal Services. The current plan right now, though, is sort of recognize that the animal services in itself is a general fund-type service, and it needs to be paid for. And it only generates, you know, between $4, maybe $500,000. So to make up the gap, you have to rely on those assessments. So Jazzcom is recognizing that we need to, one, communicate the true cost of animal services, and by doing a four-year plan to say, look, we'll use the reserves for year one, two, and three, but by year four, we'll be paying the full cost of what those assessments should be. But in the interim, there'll be other retreats with Jazzcom leadership to try to figure out revenue options and other ways to assist that fund.
The other thing is that the, it's a things, many things that need to be done at the actual facility is not getting as big of attention as could be that is necessary. I mean, that, either you need a new place or you need a very upgraded facility where the animals are kept because, and they're not able to pay for a lot of that. So that's a problem.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for that update. Next up on our agenda is Councilmember Cox.
All righty. Just one report item tonight. Intercity Transit Authority met last night and took several actions. We adopted the 2019 Annual Report and the 2020/2025 Transit Development Plan. The Development Plan describes present and proposed future services as well as discussion of revenue and other major planning aspects. We agreed to renew a one-year contract with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs Federal Advocacy Services for the year. The contract amount is $84,000. We authorized the General Manager to approve for the Department of Enterprise Services on-call contracts with three contractors. DES is managing the construction and rebuilding on the Patterson Street site there. We also agreed to extend the terms of community advisory committee members by one year. This is largely because that group, because it's a group of close to 30 people, has not been able to really meet since March. And so most of, most of them are losing, you know, a year's, essentially a year on their terms. So we've extended those. And then we've scheduled a public hearing for November 4th on the 2021/2026 Strategic Plan. And Mr. Mayor, I could either do this at the end if there's a good-of-the-order thing, or I might ask for a point of personal privilege to report on one other thing.
Go for it right now.
Okay. I think most of our council members are aware, but I just want to make sure the public is aware that there is an ongoing virtual open house on the climate mitigation plan that's, or the draft plan that's in reserve. If you go on the Thurston Regional Planning Council website and search for the climate mitigation, you can find a copy of the actual plan. You can enter a virtual open house that talks about how the plan was built, all the thinking that went into it and strategies and all, and there's places for public comment. And this is your chance, this is your voice, to talk about, you know, to let us know what you're thinking on this plan, what your priorities are, what your sensitivities are. So I really encourage you to jump in there and take part. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And I do encourage everyone who gets the chance to go to, I think it's trpc.org, although I'm just guessing, yes, and find the plan there. So next up is, is Councilmember Greenstein.
I have one report this evening. TCOM 911 met yesterday. We had a very full agenda, but there's just a couple of things that I want to touch on. First, Lewis County has almost completed their feasibility study. They've hired consultants to do a feasibility study to look at the possibilities of them actually joining Thurston 911 because of some issues they have there. They should have that completed in December for our review and for the recommendations from the consultants. So looking forward to that. Also had a very lengthy discussion regarding the new radio system and the need for placing some equipment, some of it in Lacey, Tom Water, and Olympia. And I guess there's, there's some issues with what may have to happen on those leases for that, and I believe Keith has a meeting scheduled with our city manager to discuss that further. The attorney for TCOM, which is Jeff Myers, has looked at it and has some ideas on how we can make that work. So Keith, we're bringing that to you for discussion here in the next, I think you have a meeting in the next couple of weeks. So, but that'll be important because the cost, if we had to do true cost on those leases, could get very expensive for the equipment. Also approved the first change order on the radio system last night. We knew these were coming as we have to put up some new towers and move some of the existing towers. Significant cost, about $2.3 million for this initial change order, but it does fall within the 10% contingency that was built into the original contract. So we're not over budget in any way, but we are using up the contingency pretty quick. But, and then the last thing I just wanted to mention or talk about for a minute is the budget for 2021. So we passed a preliminary budget yesterday, which will be open for public review for the next 30 days, then come back before us at next month's meeting. We're budgeting using an 8.8% reduction in sales tax revenue, which I think is a very conservative estimate at this point. But again, with COVID and all the unknowns, it was necessary to take a conservative position there. The good news is with the anticipate, even with that 8.8% reduction, we would finish 2021 with about $8 million in reserve for an ending fund balance. So TCOM's in a healthy position. Of course, a lot of that has to do with the fact that the public passed that additional 1/10th, you know, sales tax. So I think things are looking really good there, and I anticipate another good year with TCOM. So that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Miller.
Yeah, I have just two reports, and the first one being Thurston Thrives, who you guys know hasn't met for a little while and is back up and running. I don't know if that's the right way to say that, but at least having meetings again. So a lot of the meeting was spent on bringing us up to date and up to speed on, on things that have been happening behind the scenes as we were not having meetings, and things, how things have progressed and moved forward. And most of it was about how the different subcommittees have had to pivot for COVID and, and to get done the things that they need to get done, starting with the Housing Action Team and creating a new subcommittee, Housing Education Advocacy Team, or HEAT, with a new vision of centering racial equity in all future housing action, housing action team efforts and initiatives and their priority recommendations and their advocacy. The Homeless Housing Hub, you know, which is basically the homeless housing system with coordinated entry and hazardous weather task force, and they make priority funding recommendations, again, you know, showing how they pivoted during COVID. Some of the accomplishments that they, that we went over were for 2020, were the rental housing work groups, webinars they've done, they've kind of been able to pivot and get a lot of the attention that they were getting through brick and mortar online, some of them including but not limited to tenancy preservation and landlord mitigation programs, rental housing rules and regulations, eviction moratorium and rental assistance. You know, a letter was sent to Governor Inslee, and it was signed by 22 Thurston County community organizations. Rental Housing Work Group webpage, which has beginning a lot of traffic, which is The, the, the renter success classes have been going very well as people are turning to Thurston Thrives online to find out, you know, how they can, or what rights they have. And so Thurston Thrives has been helping a lot of people understand rights and understand landlord rights as well, so that we can all come together and, and figure out how to make it through this together, because, you know, landlords can't just magically come up with house payments anymore than tenants can magically come up with rents. So meeting at the table together is critical in hammering out how we're going to make it through several months of COVID, which seems to not have an end yet. The Affordable Housing Team has, has also been at work making capital pipeline funding recommendations. The Affordable Housing Team, moving forward with Homes First and Prime Locations, formed an innovative resident-focused apartment community management partnership for Merritt Manor, among other things like Habitat for Humanities, New Developments, Advancing in Tom Water and Yale, Family Support Center submitting Housing Trust Fund application to support 62 new units. Senior Housing Team's been busy. They've had several workshops. A lot of the discussion tend to focus on climate and energy, and we did spend a fair amount of time going over some of the same things that we've gone over with the TRPC and some of the things that we've gone over in these council sessions with the Climate and Clean Energy Action Team. And if you haven't been to the TRPC website to view the plan, it would be a good idea to go and take a look at that. Community Design Action Team showed their accomplishments for 2020 with some new trail miles added. A good portion of those were in Olympia and Tom Water, but Lacey did get some, some Chehalis Western side trails added, Wonderwood Park, and more to be done, so more to come on that. The Food Action Team's been very busy, as you know. The setup over at St. Martin's and the different food outreach programs are supported by Thurston Thrives. The Economy Action Team has been very busy. I think one of the main takeaways was that, you know, none of us were prepared for this, and it is really, it really just kind of shined a light on how unprepared we really were. And so now that we've had this glimpse, it, well, I guess it's more than a glimpse because it's coming into its ninth month, somewhere in that ballpark. But now we understand how prepared we are not for, you know, a pandemic or any type of event that requires all of our attention, not just some of our attention, not just 5% or 10% or 20% of the population, but, you know, really everybody. And so we, we see it on a national level, we see it at a local level. But the micro-business grants have been helpful, and even though they're, you know, micro at $1,500 apiece, $721,000 has been issued or is in the process of being issued, and a little over $300,000 remaining. So lots of different things happening, but that is the conclusion of the report for Thurston Thrives. TRPC met on October 2nd. We did go over a few of Olympia's accomplishments and the things that they've been able to do. do. The, one of the things that happened in Olympia is, you know, the Plum Street Village did get a new hygiene trailer, and that was supplied by Lotte, and so, the residents there were very happy to have that. The, one of the other things that came out of that one was, you know, the census information that we're going through now, that has just come and gone, but Lacey is up 10.4% in self-reporting, so not as many census bureau officers have to, you know, go outdoor to door and collect that information, which is great because they were short on census bureau officers anyway. And I think that is my report.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Stedman.
Mayor Solid Waste Advisory Committee met yesterday. It was a packed agenda, but the first on the agenda, like Wayne Olson was speaking today under public comment, and Councilmember Cox briefed on it a little bit, was the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. So, it's making its rounds to all the municipalities and groups like Solid Waste Advisory Committee. A lot of their work has lots of impacts on the methane gas and stuff like that to take into consideration. So, they gave us their presentation, and then we also, you know, it's budget time, so 2021 proposed budget. The only thing really significant out of that is we're spending a decent amount of reserves this year. I'm going off memory, but it's close to $5 million. We're doing capital development. One project that comes to mind is the flare system, burn off gas here locally, and also there's scale software upgrades at the work, and I can't think of other things right off the top of my head. And then we also have out to public comment is a solid waste management plan. So, much like the Thurston County mitigation plan, you can go to Thurston County and look up SWAC, and you can find this solid waste management plan there to review. And they touched briefly on flow control, and other than that, the RFP is moving right along. One significant thing I want to bring to public and the city's attention is that Kitsap County is also, has gone through this process, they're about a year ahead of us, and they're out to contracted right now. And preliminary numbers that I'm hearing from people bidding on that work is it's up by between 10% and 20%. So, if we were to do the same thing, now Kitsap County is the same size as Thurston County, pretty much same, almost identical. And if they're looking at 10% to 15%, 20% increases, and we have contract on board already on paper, you know, we have options that we can exercise and pay the same amount and not have increase of anything. And I'm not saying that's what's going to happen in Kitsap County, but it's something to pay attention to because they are literally a year ahead of us. And it's also taxing on the contractors of having to, you saw firsthand, I've reported before with like IT, right, intercity transit that Carolyn Cox, Councilmember sits on. It took you several years to get your buses and infrastructure on the streets working, right? It'd be the same thing for Kitsap County and solid waste, and it'd be the same for us. So, you know, for these contractors to take on additional work when they're already taxed limited-wise with, you know, FTEs, people trained to do the job, getting all the infrastructure, I'm telling you, being a private sector person, Mayor, you own a business, there's a couple of us on this that get that, having to do extra work that, and plus all the red tape that goes with it, is a huge factor when you already have the work on the books, it doesn't require anything extra. I don't know about you, but if I was a bidder, I would charge extra if you're going to force me to do any work that I don't have to do that I'm already contracted and to do. And so, anyways, it's something to bring to everybody's attention and have them pay attention while this process happens. I'm not saying it's going to happen that way, it's just red flags. And in the business community, you pay attention to other like-minded businesses to see what they go through, see what challenges you might be facing, and, you know, in a short future. So, other than that, that's why I brought it up, and that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Conkle.
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
Well, just like that, we've reached the end of our agenda, and why I'm here at City Hall is because we're going to be going to an executive session. Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, just two items. One, we probably need about 25 minutes for the executive session. And then, two, the number that the council approved with the Community Development Block Grant to help the Veteran Center is 422,000. So, you're well within budget, but there's also soft costs that will be identified in the future. So, I just want to give you that number.
That's right.
Saved a hundred thousand.
Yeah, thank you. I remember we set aside community development block grant money, I just didn't remember what that number was. And I'm not also sure what happens when you don't spend all that CDBG money either, because we were guessing at the time, and I know there's other expenses coming, but are we, can we put that to other project, or is it go back? How's that happen?
It would. It would go back to other CDBG eligible projects.
Okay, that's what I thought so. Okay, so, I will be adjourning to an executive session. The City Manager said it's going to be about 25 minutes, just to talk about potential litigation per RCW 42-30-110. So, I will be going to executive session now. No decisions will be made there, and I will come back here before I close the meeting. So, right now, we're going to adjourn to executive session.
I'm back from our executive session. We actually need to extend this executive session for another 20 minutes. So it's another 20 minutes. Thank you.
So it's another 20 minutes. Thank you. And I'm back and believe it or not, I need another 10 minutes. But for sure, this will be the last 10 minutes of our executive session. I will be coming back and ending the meeting in 10 minutes. So I need another 10 minutes of the next session.
But for sure, this will be the last 10 minutes of our executive session. I will be coming back and ending the meeting in 10 minutes. So I need another 10 minutes of the next session.
Well, I'm back. We just left our executive session. No decisions were made and so we reached the end of our agenda. And like always, you keep it classy, Lacy. I'm going to call this meeting adjourned.